You can't go. I'll.
Yeah.
Or another person. And they.
It's always all the rushes.
You have a. Yeah, but not it. So just. They were the first. They say. There's always hands. So now they're gross.
Oh. Thank you same back.
No, no, no.
Here.
He was stupid.
I'm sorry. Yeah, there's way. You're. See, I just. You. You're. 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 My vision. Full process of. Just.
I don't think.
You know. It's a. You got. Do you believe, but he had time to jump. First. I was. Better.
Oh.
It was like. Even five. Four. Four. So. All the. Said. For. So. I do travel in their house. I just. Old fan. But. I just. Just. Hey.
That's the first.
I tell them.
It's. Really. We have. A shot. President.
We still want to refill. We. We. So. That's true. But.
Yeah.
It's. It's. Right. The. So. It's like. Change. And he was. So. I was. I think. You're. And I. I'm. Your. This. I take one of our things. The show down. Like. Fifty. All of that. Actually. It's. Here. It's. One. Nice. So. I'm. I'm. So. I should. I should. Well, this girl. She. 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 That's. He's. He's. My. Result. And he's. Just. Right. I did. Right. So. I am so sick. He just. Kind of. Over. The. Showers.
He. Exactly.
And he's done it. Had it. I mean, I'm. Parents. Very. Don't. Be. You're. Being. Pity. I'm. Black. You don't. It would say. I'm fixing. Get. Your. Eyes. Who. If I was. And. He. My. Best. Juice. He's. Trying. To. Get. It. I didn't. Say. I buy. This. Because. That's. My. Sense. So. Then. All. What? I. He has a shoulder. Checks him down. Just. Like. Yeah. I want. You. So. You know. How. You. About. You. Catch. You. To. Get. Your. Mother. I'm going to say. I think. You're. That. I think. You're. Very. Girl. I. You guys. You. Head. And. But. I'm. This. Is. For. Yeah. But. It would say. You're. Down. But. They. 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 Heard. You. Can sell. With. This. Place. My. Day. But. Wait. I mean. We. You. Have. He said. Yeah. No. I guess. I mean. And. It. I mean. You. Do. It. Off.
That. Was. That. Because. I know. How. He. Also.
Better hurt. She. Fresh. You. Why? You better. She. Fresh.
What's? I'm getting one myself. Here. She. Went. You. I'm. I'm. I think. The. Pretty. Yeah. But. Now. Yeah. Okay. It's. So. Nice. I can. All. I think. You. What? Well. Yes. For. The. Times. Most. So. In. Don't. Use. Something. Yeah. I. Sense. Just. Probably. So. Oh. She. Good. Hey.
There. You. Don't. Yeah. Yeah. Yep. And. For. All. Today. I'm. Just. About. It's. Why? I'm. Which. It's. Very. Um. Such.
So. Solutions. Okay. Okay. For. The. Yeah. Well. I. We're. Not. To. That. I feel. We just. Get. One. Uh. All right. I was. Yeah. You're. Not. Here. And. I said. I'm. That's. Where. You. Come. On. Over.
You know. When. You. I thought. That. It's. So. Are you. Yeah. When?
Yeah. 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 I'm really. Slow. They. Just. Slow. So. We. My. Hearing. The. How. Home. Purple. Mouse. Who. To. Areas. That's. All.
Are you. Sweet?
David. That.
We're. Good. Now.
Well. We. Yes. Such. As. Well.
I've had. Most. Sure. Okay.
Please. You're. Very. Long. Good. Girl. For. Certainly. Here. I tried. To. Leave. All. The. Right. So. I just. Move. You. Okay.
Well. I do. Tell. We. Have. We. Should. I. Learned. That. We. Did. Talk. To. You. Yes. Girl. I'm. Trying. Something. Spot. Me. Or. Um.
Situation. She. Don't. Do. It. Does. I think. It. Doesn't. Last.
For. Spawning. Nation. Because. They. Go. Such. The. That. We. Have. So. I do. Look. More. Especially. That. Goes. Up. Well. I mean. You can see. Boys. And. Some. Cutting. Check. Like. The. You. Make. Some. These. Things. And. Yeah. It. You're. Uh. Great. That. Is. Yes. You're. That. You're. That. I. Like. I'm. Right. We. Have. The. Products. Products. And. Build. It. Well. I'm. Sorry. Sorry. I'm. No. Well. We. All. Right. Job. I'm. Getting. Access. For. Free. Come. Matter. I'm. Working. Waiting. Pretty. What's. In. The. I was. Having. A. Problem. Six. Kilos. Oh. Well. It. Is. That. Was. Out. Oh. Yeah. I heard. That. One. Yeah. Maybe. I read. One. Sad. Three. Little. So. I want. Big. You. Do. It. I don't. You. Fuck. You. Don't. Get. It. Like. You. Don't. Do. One. Product. I'm. Still. In. That. I'm. All. Night. Pretty. Much. I. Didn't. Get. Somebody. Else. Kick. Out. Fuck. We. Fuck. Oh. Us. Everybody. Was. The. Island. I was. Alter. It. Secret. And. I'm. Sorry. That. I'm. And. You. Man. There. Gentlemen.
Are you. Is. Huh?
Out. The shop. They're talking. You.
Hmm. Uh huh.
So. Don't. Be shocked. They're talking. You.
I'm. Looking for who you're talking to.
No.
Said. Gentlemen.
It'd be. Very. Fair. If we. Not. Take. Your. Head. Off. You. Have. It. I'm. Going. Back. To. There.
I'm. I'm gonna be the first one. Say. Did. Get. Back. In.
Ah. He. First. Oh.
Good morning.
I. If. You're. Play. You. Else. Well. The. I'm. I don't. Do. You. You're. Fine. I. Good. You're. Sure. Those. Don't. He's. I mean. There. Hasn't. It was. Okay.
Good. Morning. Morning. Morning.
Good.
Good. Yeah.
What?
Good morning.
I told you. It's. Um.
Yeah. I mean. That. Is. A. Way. Of. The. Years. It's. Like. Any. Something. Going. To. Do. I saw. It. Something. You. I don't. Know. What. I. Do. I saw. It. Well. That's. Something. You. Better. Well. You. Send. It. Yeah. I don't. Know. You. Didn't. Use. Power. But. I'm. Just. The. Corner. Skin. Well. They. Hurting. You.
Isn't. That. Interesting.
That. You're. Not. I think. I like. You.
You. Right. Yeah.
I'm. Planning. For. Me. What is. That. You're.
Okay. Yeah. Um. First. Let. Reboot. The. Server. Yesterday.
And you can look at growth during that year or two years of chasing early. And have a plan for the place and the location place. Or when you, it's sound like you need special funding. Um, and also given. Meaning. So that this could be handled with existing funds and not raising. Uh, bond or taxes. I'm not for. Speaking to you as a system. So. That's.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And what which precinct you live in?
Sir.
Which precinct do you live in?
Two precinct two, okay.
All right, item number, or next person up is Thomas Thompson. Thomas Townsen.
Tommy Townsen, I live with the nine one nine North Main Street in Grant's Lane, that's precinct one. I just have some questions that I think we can answer today. So.
No, I'm sorry. This isn't, this is for you to talk to us. It's not, it's not interactive. Okay, we will. Very good. We will.
Yes. So we'll, we decided today to purchase the Paul Michael building. And how much money have we already spent? On the Paul Michael building? And I understand that we're not raising taxes by the Paul Michael building. But what are we going to do? With the Paul Michael building? If the bond election to renovate the building? Is not for. Because I understand it's four million dollars, he's only going to buy the bill. And then there's like another twenty five million dollars that's going to take to renovate the building. And I understand that we're going to have a bond election on the twenty five million dollar. So I don't know if that's true or not. That's what I heard. So I'm just wondering what we're going to do to the Paul Michaels building? If the bond election might put. To resell it or? So. I read the resolution. From April. About. The renovations. And I wasn't a big fan of it, but right in the middle of the resolution, there's a big if. Which I just call like contracts and. The word if in them. Not going to do the community renovations if we have to raise taxes. And I asked Joe for, he said, the Republican committee back in May. Who decides if we're going to raise taxes? And the county commissioners decide that. So. You can still do all the renovations without raising taxes if you just take the money. Out of the public funds. So I'm just curious if that's. What's going to happen? If we don't. That the bond election? Is denied, or? If they don't even have a bond election? So I would like a resolution that does not have the word if in it. If you're real sincere about not spending taxpayers' money in the renovations. You can just have a resolution that says. We will not do any, we will not do any renovations without a bond election. There's no need for the word if. Normally, remember, I signed the recontract. And I was in construction for fifty years, we're writing our contract. And if there was an if statement in there, I tried to get that out because I had no control over. What's going to happen with if? There's normally. If means. Hey, we're going to stick to something, that's all they did, you know? Or if something goes wrong, you're going to be responsible. Maybe not, you know, like. Pay if paid, but that's probably the most famous if statement in the contract. We'll pay you if we get paid. So if the owner doesn't pay me, I might will pay you. So I just don't like. Resolution to contracts here to work if so. I'm just curious what we're going to do? When we have an election and it's not approved, how are we going to innovate? The Paul Michael building? And how are we going to use the Paul Michael building if we want it? And what are we going to do with it? When we get within that? So I hope those questions are.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. All right, next we have Ben Henley. Our final contestant.
Say it again, yeah. Gosh, believe it or not, I sometimes feel a little excited to publicly speak, I just try to have it. Thank you, gentlemen. For doing what you did. You gotta have all your skin up. Because for every one person that pat you on the back, you got a hundred criticizing everything you say into. In the last few years, I've noticed we have a large population. Of people who love to write and complain, pointing fingers, making baseless false accusations. And offer nothing as a solution to the problem. Even in this room. Sure, we can repair it. I think we would all enjoy right now, construction crew had all three of those windows out, probably were trying to have this meeting, right? No. Yes, this building is in such a. I have seen this group of gentlemen before me publicly criticized because you may get. Although if you stop and think, y'all weren't here fifteen or twenty years ago. In this position. But you're criticized for not fixing it fifteen or twenty years ago. I apologize that you have to take that kind of heat for something that is totally out of your control. In my opinion, Paul Michael's building is not the perfect solution. I think it's the best solution. Perfect would be, you can give me a domain and take about three blocks, the rest of the courthouse here, and just dose everything in its path and take it from people and build what you want. Except nobody likes eminent domain. I don't think there is a perfect. Or ideal solution to this problem. So what we need to do is figure out how to make a silk purse out of a thousand. And be our best. Thank you for not just spending tons and tons of money. I appreciate that. Understand as we move forward on this project, I won't say we, because I'm a voter and, you know, I have put one of you up here, uh, that I'll stand behind you guys. You're going to get a lot of stuff from my service. I have been known to refer to some of the day savers as low information voters. Because they don't have all the answers and they won't ask questions. I have told, I don't have any people. Go see your commissioner. Someone said, I don't even know who he is. Or someone said, he won't answer my phone. It's because he's working in his job, that's why he's not answering his phone. Be prepared to sit down with them and show them the budget. Understand, I've seen this before. They're going to accuse you of pocketing funds from the county. They're going to accuse you of doing brother law deals. Our response on social media is get some proof, we'll take it to the authorities and we'll put somebody in jail. They don't want. All they want to do is stir up trouble. They want to hate, they want to spit. Apologize, you're going to have to endure even more of that. I've heard people say, oh, we need Doge because of all the mismanagement, cut the ways. And my response is, go sit down with your commissioner, he'll show you the budget. This is what we plan to spend, this will be actually speaking. And by the way, we have a county auditor, we still have a county auditor, no way.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, so we actually have in-house stuff. Again, low information voters, they vote, they have information to make assumptions. They call you guys incompetent, so you have bad ideas, and I've noticed that when they do that, not one of them offers a better solution. I learned a long time ago, if you're going to criticize why somebody's doing the job, show them another way. I apologize that so many people. Will tell you, you don't know what you're doing, and what you're doing is wrong. And then not offer another way. I think all you guys are grown up men enough. To say, if somebody comes to me and says, oh, I didn't think of that, we got to look this way, you have a good idea. I think every one of you would do that. And I'm ready to get ideas. Yes, I've been screaming, don't raise our taxes. Do what needs to be done. I understand the tax rate actually went down this year. Because you're trying to help the average person. What the average person doesn't do is fully look at the dollar signs behind buying these property. Most people buy these properties like they buy a car. And it's a terrible sales technique, but it works. Can you afford this payment? And they can afford this payment on this house, that's great, as long as your insurance never goes up, your property value never goes up, because when property value goes up, your taxes go up. Then have a car. But it doesn't, it's property. And then we had this influx of free money thanks to the Fed can turn their back to the inflation problem that we have, and I know I'm getting off the links for the average person, but. Oh my gosh, you should always understand that your house payment is probably going to go up when you buy the house. And with standard inflation, your, your, your income never keeps up at the rate that your expense does. And we got a lot of people that are hurting because of that. You have a lot of people hurting because we had this unreal spike in property values. In my opinion, I don't think budget county has kept up with the flex, I know it's ten percent, you only got a three or four percent raise. And these guys who go out every day and put their life on the line, we're not able to get that, and we're paying rent. I don't forget, we got a lot of evil people too. A lot of evil people in this town. I don't want to say anything. Publicized in the world, I'm going to tell you what, cartel is here and they're doing quite well. They're all around you. These guys every day. Are that far away from a radio call and they're going to put their life on the line. They need to be actively taken care of. Yes, we got a lot of expense we got to come up with. Guys, I appreciate you trying to do this as inexpensively as you can. Just understand. A lot of low information voters are going to criticize you. They're not going to have you back. I did. Thank you. Thank you. I wouldn't stay for some more, but I got to get to work because I got to earn a living, so I have to pay taxes because a lot of debt beats are on the.
You, you've already adjourned.
Sir?
You've already adjourned. All right. We will now move to item number four, which is discuss and consider authorizing the county judge to sign the closing documents and all associated paperwork for the purchase of the landed building located at nineteen thirty. North Trade Days Boulevard and authorize payment out of the general fund. And I just, I would like to give the background on this, uh. The commissioners, uh, court initially signed a contract in, uh. December of twenty four to purchase this building for four point two million dollars with the closing date of July first, twenty twenty five. Uh, again, I, I won't go into the reasons why we decided to purchase it, but we did that contract. Uh, we came to realize in, uh. March of twenty twenty five, uh, that, uh. Uh, because of the way we did our accounting, we had not actually budgeted. For the purchase of this facility, and so the money was not in the budget. And, uh, now we could have declared an emergency and actually approved the purchase of the building in our last fiscal year. Uh, but we elected not to do that. And, uh, we paid sixty thousand dollars in escrow on the first contract. And we went back to, uh, Paul Michael and talked to him. And he agreed to, uh, let us renegotiate the contract, uh, uh, for the same purchase amount. And, uh, for six, uh, to, to. Escrow amount of two hundred thousand dollars this time. And we did, uh, the sixty thousand dollars that we paid was, uh, uh, was not refunded to us, was not used to the purchase. And part of that, uh. Analysis of doing that. We looked at the fact that we would have that four million dollars. Sitting in the bank earning interest for an additional six months. Uh, by doing it, or not, not six months, but five months. We would not have the utilities to pay for from July until November. We would not have insurance to pay for the building. That amount that we would say by interest we would earn on the money in the bank. And by not having to pay those utilities would far exceed the sixty thousand dollars that we forfeited with the first contract. So. We elected to do the new contract, uh, and paid the two hundred thousand dollar to escrow with the closing date set for November the fifteenth. And so now we are at that point, uh, where we are ready to. Move forward with the, uh, we've, we've actually already approved the contract. This is more a formality. Uh, to, uh, go ahead and authorize the funds for it. We had at the end of. Our fiscal year ended in September of thirtieth, uh, we had, uh, close to eleven million dollars in our general fund. So we have the money available to us to pay for the, uh, Paul Michael building. So that, that being the background, uh. Uh, is there any further discussion?
I made some notes. That, all I'm talking about. Uh. This county is growing. And there's people that say that this county isn't growing. Well, if it wasn't growing, four school bonds wouldn't have passed this year. There was four school bonds the past year, she ever expansion because there's more kids, so we are growing. And it's, as of now, it's, it's our five's duty. To help serve and protect the, the public the best that we can. And I know this is an agricultural county, and I would like to keep it agricultural county, and if anybody knows that better than me, I mean, I think I'm a pretty good, I've lived in, been in agriculture for forty five years that I've lived here. And I used to own the livestock auction, the county livestock auction, and every week. We would have a herd sellout because. Mom and dad died. And the kids sold off the land and split it up. And we see it every week. All four of us see it every week with subdivisions coming in. Every single day they are coming in, so this county is growing. And. This Paul Michael building has been said in these public comments. It's not perfect. But it's the best solution. That we have. And it's about as perfect as you can get for what we have to work with. Uh, it will not raise the taxes on the purchase of it. It will be a one-stop shop. It's big enough. For what we have today. And it will be big enough for what we have in twenty years. There's plenty of room for expansion. Um. And it fulfills all the needs that we have. And, uh, I'm a hundred percent for the purpose of this building. Not only do we have the duty to, to help the citizens today, but we also got to think in the future and help this prosper county in the future also. And this building will set us up in a good position. To, uh, prepare us for, for the future. So I'm a hundred percent for it.
Judge, I don't mind answering some of the questions that were posed a little bit earlier. Because I, I think that some folks may not have heard. I'm the one who did write the resolution and the if word is, is applicable and it's appropriate for this particular instance. If a bond election goes before the people, uh, it has to be added to your tax rate. There's no option for that. You have to add that bond to the tax rate. But we have eleven million dollars in the bank right now because we were frugal. Some areas we were negligent. Uh, in, in prior courts because building is not, has not been maintained in some areas as it should be. Some roads have not been maintained as they should be, but we do have eleven million dollars. So what I'm, the reason I put if in my. In my resolution is because it is possible for us to use. The funds that come in in taxes. For example, if we have new construction. Through subdivisions or we have new construction in, in, uh, industrial or commercial. Those taxes are an increase in what we bring in, and it is possible for us if we limit the amount, uh, as one of the speakers said, if we limit the amount. Of the expansion, we don't have to build out eighty three thousand square feet of new construction. For our immediate use, that, that, in my opinion, is more than what you need to do. And if you limit this, the cost per square foot. The. Folks in Houston say you should spend two hundred dollars a square foot. We, we don't have to do that. If we spend something, uh, a little more reasonable, we could be in a position where we. Build that building out for, uh, six and a half million dollars, not twenty five million dollars. I don't want to increase in my taxes, I pay taxes too. And if we, i- if we. Uh, put a plan together to build out that building at six or eight million dollars. Then we, if we are frugal with the money that we bring in in our property taxes and we're careful with what we spend, we can pay. The build out of this building with our existing revenue, which does not equal a tax increase. On the folks that are here. We are using new construction money. When a property changes from agriculture and you're getting a hundred dollars a year. In, in property tax collection to, uh. Five thousand dollars a year, that's a substantial increase that is not, that's not, uh, figured into that you can only collect three and a half percent more. This year than what you collected last year. Well, that's, that doesn't apply to that cap. So we have the ability through new construction to build out. The, the Paul Michael building, if we build out forty. Forty five thousand square feet, move everybody over there. Uh, we, we have the ability to do that through existing revenue and not raise taxes, and that's what I said from the very beginning. I don't want to raise your taxes. I don't want to put a twenty five million dollar bond personally. I don't, I can't, I'm not speaking for anybody else. I don't want. A twenty five million dollar bond, uh, on the people of Van Zent County. So if we can do it through existing revenue in the same way that we put eleven million dollars in the bank. Then, uh, it, it's my opinion that we can build that building out there and move folks over without it being a substantive impact. I see the need for the Paul Michael building. Uh, because of new construction, new people moving in, so why not use new people moving in their tax increase money? To build that building out, and that's what my, that's what I have said from the very beginning. So I don't want to put a limitation. On the court that says that we absolutely will put this as a bond because that will necessarily raise your taxes if it's approved. If it's not, then it hamstrings us and, and. On one hand, you could say it hamstrings us. On, on another hand, I could say, well, we can go ahead and do the certificate of obligation. To, to build it out and pay that through our existing revenue and not raise the taxes one way or the other. But I'm not in favor of a twenty five million dollar build out of that, of that property over there. Uh, that building should be functional. Not. You know, a, a Kaufman or a Dallas-esque, uh. Build out, in my opinion. I'm open to, uh, be persuaded. Uh, and everybody that has come and asked me questions about that, and some folks don't, they don't want to ask me the questions. They'll ask my precinct chairman and, and the precinct chairs. Uh, will come to me and ask the question and I, and so the information gets relayed back, and I'm perfectly okay with that. But I can tell you right now, the if was there because it was applicable and it was beneficial. And anybody in this county who has an interest in speaking to me without regard to which precinct you're in. I'm happy to share with you what my ideas are related to how we do the things and, and why I vote the way that I do. I don't mind. I, I, I welcome it. But it doesn't happen that often. I get spoken at a lot more often than I get spoken to.
I agree with Cliff on that, and also I didn't bring this up. On this, we will have the opportunity, when I say we. The, the citizens of the county. We had an opportunity for a courthouse restoration grant. Two years ago. We were offered nine million dollars. This court turned it down. Uh, we didn't have the cost and we didn't have a plan or where to go. That's, that's the reason it got turned down. Uh, and two years ago, correct me if I'm wrong here, Judge. The total allotment for the historical society grant was forty eight million. They have now upped that to a hundred million. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So in hindsight, that was actually a good decision because we will apply for this grant again. And if they've doubled the money. And we get the grant, they should give us more money, more money through the grant, which would be less money for us to cover for the cost of the courthouse. And with this Paul Michael building, we do that, we have a plan now. So we can apply for this grant and go for it. And also the gentleman for Grant's Lane, you're talking about planning for that. We have a DA's office. We have a tax office and we have an annex. That's three properties that we can sell. That those, if it's, this is Brandon's opinion. That the monies from those. Properties. Go towards the, um, infrastructure of the Paul Michael's building.
Actually, the tax office is already.
And the tax, tax office has been sold for two hundred eighty six thousand dollars. We got to start paying rent on that in August. So we need to get film out of there, into there, so we don't start paying rent. So that has been sold, but we still have the annex building and the DA's building. Those two properties can be sold and the monies can go towards the structure of that Paul Michael building because they will go there too, because this will be a one-stop shop. If that. That answered your question too.
I, I agree with you, Brandon, and you just stole my.
I read mine.
Yeah, you stole my speech.
Are you reading mine?
No.
But, but I agree with that. I think that, that the one-stop deal and. That was, my saying was, was that we. We have these properties that we can sell. And I feel like that, uh. These properties will probably more than pay for. Or at least get really close. To the rebuild. And, and that, that would not cost anybody anything.
That's, that's not a question I should refer. Sorry.
We don't, we don't know what it's going to cost. We don't have a plan. We don't know how long it's going to take us to refurbish it to get it where we're at. We don't have the money. We're on a window. Of time with the bond. Issue. Not, not the bond issue, the grant issue, right? I don't know. There's a whole lot of I don't knows, um. Judge may be able to address that for us, but we, you know, if we go out for the grant, we get the grant, how much time do we have before we have to get out of here to use the grant money? We don't have the money to refurbish it, um. Cliff, I agree with what you said. You, I agreed with you when you first presented that idea of using the new growth money to. Build that out. But we spent the new growth money this year on something else. This court did. Um. And it was eight hundred and seventy four thousand dollars.
Correct.
Um, that won't go very far on a. Ten, twelve million dollar project. Be pretty tough to build it out in time to be able to refurbish this. We minimize and maximize things. Based upon what we want. A lot of times it's human nature. So when we didn't want to refurbish the courthouse and reject the grant, we said, it'll cost twenty five million dollars. And then when we want the Paul Michael building, we say it'll cost seven million dollars. I don't know what it'll cost and nobody knows what it's going to cost. Nobody knows. Um, we saw an opportunity to build, to buy. Purchase a building that would possibly fit our needs. It's a metal building, probably on a four-inch slab with no, there's probably no footings in the building. I don't know. We don't know what's, we don't know for sure what's in the slab of that building, the foundation. Foundations are pretty important. School bond passed a few years ago, twenty years ago in Grant's Lane. They said. We're running out of room. Because of the growth. They had three more students in. Two thousand than I had in two thousand twelve, and I was in, when I was in school, nineteen hundred and eighty-six. Three more. It had grown. So much that they had three more students. School bonds passed because people want to invest in their children. That's where their heart is, and normally that's, that's why school bonds pass. Most people don't give a flip about the courthouse. They want their streets fixed and they want the sheriff to show up if they call him. I agree with paying the sheriff. The, the bump, the money that we have. How the eleven million probably came from the sheriff. Putting money back in. Uh, there's, this is all a bunch of big, this is a puzzle box shook up in my head, but, um. So. You know. We talk about paying the sheriffs. Paying the sheriff, we talk about not raising taxes. There's no way. That we're going to buy all these things and do all these things and it not cost a taxpayer something. And furthermore. When we started all this last year. We were talking about a jail. The first, first month I was in here, there was probably close to four hundred million dollars worth of projects put in front of me. Of different directions to go, and I know we have to work through all those things and. It ain't going to change the outcome of today, what I'm saying. Um, everybody knows where I'm at and I know where they're at, and once this is all done, we'll. Work through it. And once this is all done, we'll work through it. Um, I don't think the Paul Michael building is the, the worst. I think it's a way. It may not be the best way. Um, been a lot of mistakes along the way. And I hope from this point forward, we can make better decisions slower. Um, there's probably a whole lot more to say than this, but we have the four point two to buy. That's right. We're gonna have to come up with, um, a lot of money to do all the things that we're wanting to do. Um, I didn't like the if either. I don't, I don't think there was any malice involved in that. I just think that, um, directly or indirectly, you go to spending twenty million dollars. We're a nonprofit organization. It's coming out of y'all's pocket. This morning, you know, at five o'clock, moon was shining real bright and people were barreling down highway seventeen. They'd been up a half hour getting ready for work and they're gonna drive to Dallas. And every dollar that we spend on this court came out of somebody's pocket that has worked for that dollar. And it's just important that we remember that. And I think everybody recognizes that. I hope they do. Um, but I would hate to get into something. You know, it's kind of like, like someone said one time, let's pass this bill so we can see what's in it. There's just too many unanswered questions and you're living in some kind of fantasy land if you think that it's not gonna affect your tax rate or your services for us to spend that kind of money. Do we have problems? Absolutely. Was there some mistakes made in the past? Surely there had to be some negligence on the courthouse. Um, do we need more room? Yes. Are we growing at a rate that we're just about to be run over? No. Um, is it slowing down? Yes. Did we come through four hard years with the Democrat, uh, president? Yes, we had a, a tough four years for the country. Is my son paying three, four hundred dollars a week to feed his family? Yes. Is he having a hard time making his house payment to feed his family? Yes. Um, y'all got kids too. We're in a, did, do we start out as a court with the idea that we're gonna go to the maximum tax, tax rate? Yes, we have. Um, there's a whole lot of things that probably we need to slow down and think about, but we're already to this point now and I've expressed what I probably need to express. I'm, you know, y'all know where I'm at, so.
I wanted to caution one thing that even the commissioners here, when you, when you choose to bring forward, um, an illumination of the problem without bringing forward any particular solutions, are you really helping?
Yeah, I don't know, but I, I know, I know this, that when we, when we make decisions with people saying we've got to do something, we don't normally make good decisions.
Right, but.
Like is the building falling down?
But the, but the consideration there is that there may be things that other people see that we don't.
Yeah, I believe that.
That, uh, because if, if we were to talk about, um, you know, the intricacies of writing a, a title pinion from patent or sovereignty. There may be things that I can provide there that, that would baffle some because it's something that I've been involved with and, and done a lot. So all I'm saying is, is that, that while you say that what I'm saying, you, you negated everything that I said. You said, there's no way we're gonna be able to do that project over there. And you still said twenty to twenty-five million dollars, but you don't have any solid, you don't have anything solid to, to say.
I didn't say this. I didn't say that. This is what I, what I'm saying is like, we minimized, we didn't want, we decided we didn't want to do the courthouse. We said it's gonna cost at least twenty-five million dollars to do it. When they said it would cost twelve million dollars.
But we didn't say that though.
We said that. This court said that.
We didn't say that. We said that we should give it a little bit more time and get those numbers together. And, and I was out, I was outvoted by those that said, we want to reject the, we want to reject.
We can, we can get it on camera. This court has said things like that.
But, but what I'm telling you is, is that we, we have to separate sometimes the court from the individuals and, and if the individual is bringing you and says, see, with the, with the experience that I have in contracts, I know that it is possible for you to say, if we're gonna build out forty thousand square feet, you are limited to a hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot. That is what we're paying. You, you can write contracts that do those kind of things. So by you saying that it's, it's gonna be a twenty-five million dollar project.
I'm not saying it's gonna be a twenty-five million dollar project. I'm saying what it's gonna cost us at this courthouse and that together. And I'm also saying that the eight hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars that you in your mind thought we could use to build it out got spent on something else this year. And we had to, we had to because we started out in a hole. We didn't have numbers.
And you were disappointed.
And there were some other things that occurred in there that, that caused, you know, some.
So what I'm saying is you can have an idea that you're gonna have this money to spend, but it could go somewhere else.
Well, do we, do we own the building today? We don't own the building today. In, in the budget that we did two months ago, it, it, there's, there's no way to say, hey, we're gonna have the building and this is the amount of money we should set aside to build it out. Or, or I would have pushed for it.
Okay.
I would have pushed for it. Plus, I know that we have other, I know that we have other sources, like the sale of buildings, that, that we can do some of that. So I.
Possibly. We don't know what they're worth.
No, but you can still sell them and it's real property.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's worth something.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I, uh, address, address some of the, uh, histories? Okay, this courthouse was built in nineteen thirty-seven. Okay, in nineteen sixty-two, it had a major upgrade with electric, new electrical and air conditioning, the water system that we have right now. Okay, in nineteen sixty-two, we are still using the boiler, uh, from nineteen sixty-two to heat this building. Okay, that was sixty-three years ago. The only, the only major improvements that have been done since sixty-two have been a new roof, which we invested half a million, more than half a million dollars on two years ago. And, uh, a new outside water cooler, uh, for the air conditioning system, which was installed in twenty twenty for about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Okay, that is the only major upgrades that have occurred in, in, since, uh, nineteen sixty-two. And so the courthouse restoration grant, uh, is a process in which, uh, when you, uh, obtain it and start doing it, it's a two-year pro, a minimum two-year process where you vacate the building and they come in and they actually replace all the electrical. They will actually, right now, the electrical runs along the floorboards. Okay, it will all be in the walls and in the ceiling. It will not be on the floorboard, on the floor, around the floor. They'll replace all the plumbing. They will put, put new heating and air conditioning in, more efficient than, than we have right now. And, and in that process, and then, uh, uh, that is what is designed and constructed. The cost that, uh, we applied for in twenty twenty uh, was, uh, it cost, it was estimated to cost around eleven to twelve million dollars. When we applied again in twenty twenty-four, that cost was again eleven to twenty, uh, twelve million dollars. There's a different cost estimator, someone who is a little bit more familiar with, uh, historical. That, that's, I don't know what the discrepancy is there on the difference. So we will apply again and, uh, the, the grants will open up in, uh, May of next year, twenty twenty-six. The, uh, the grants will be awarded in July of twenty twenty-six. And at that point in time, we'll know where, where we need to go, what we need to do. And that, it is at that point that we will decide, uh, what would be the best course of action in that regard. Okay, so the, the estimated cost that we currently have is that it would cost twenty million dollars to renovate the, the Paul Michael building to fit all of the county offices from the courthouse and the other offices together. Twenty million for that and another five million for the courthouse restoration, which would be our part. That is the estimate right now. Okay, that's what I'm saying. And, uh, we don't know how much the, the historical commission will be offering, uh, on the grant process. We do have to have some, uh, portion of it. Uh, I think maybe ten, uh, five to ten percent we have to include that the county will have to pay for. So, uh, that in my mind is accurate cost for the future in that regard. Uh, and so I, I believe it's a doable process in that regard. And we will, uh, address that there are other options. If the, if a bond election is decided, go for a bond election. Uh, and again, the resolution was that we would not do anything that would raise the people's taxes without them having an opportunity to vote on it. That was, I believe, is that correct, the resolution? Okay, so if we went out, uh, if we needed the twenty million dollars, we would go out to the voters and ask them for it, uh, in that regard. So, uh, and with that, but this is, this is the first step. We, we as a commissioner court do not have to buy this building. We can keep kicking the can down the road, which has happened for the last twenty years. Cause we started, they started working on courthouse restoration grant in nineteen ninety-nine. It was the first time they applied, applied for it. And, uh, uh, you know, we, we keep getting closer and closer. Uh, but, uh, it is not my, uh, opinion that we should kick the can down the road and let it be someone else's problem. Because if you go outside and look, at some point in time, there's gonna be major issues with the, if we don't do some, uh, work on the outside of the building, uh, if you look at it, you'll see. Uh, sixty-three years, there's been no major work done on this building, other than what I've already talked about. And, uh, we can't keep doing that. We need to, we need to plan on it and we're gonna do it. Um, and the other issue is addressing the space needs. If you go around to any of the offices around here, you'll see people are on top of each other. Uh, there's no room to add people. There's no room to add, uh, uh, space to this facility in the current, with the current situation that we have. And so this is an effort to plan for the future. And if you have seen the presentation, which we did in district courtroom, I forget when it was done, but it explains why this is a good deal for the county. When you look at, uh, uh, what, what is costing other counties to do the same thing. And we are, we are literally half the cost with this, with purchasing this building and being able to renovate it and, and move into it. And so, uh, uh, in that regard, so that's why I'm supporting this because it is designed to actually, uh, address the issues we have with the current courthouse to allow us to restore it. And, and, uh, at the same time to bring, consolidate all of our operations in one facility, which will be much more efficient in that regard. So that is, that is why, uh, I support this. So is there any other comment?
Yeah, I want to say one last thing. I, I realize we.
Is this, is this what we last time?
No, it won't be the last time.
Okay, alright. Go ahead.
We do have to go somewhere to refurbish courthouse. Um, we, I was in somebody's office this week. Some stuff fell out of the ceiling. We don't know what it is. You know, there are a lot of things and there's things, there's a lot of unanswered questions about our building, but I know that we have to go somewhere and, um, and that building, you know, it's, it, there are just a lot of unanswered questions about it to me. You know what I'm saying? They're just like, we don't know what's coming back here when we get through with that. We're probably not gonna sell that building, you know, once we get it. Um, I just don't, there's a whole lot of things I just don't have answered in my head that give me peace that we will not be in y'all's pockets. You know, I just feel like that's probably could happen, so. But as far as it being a way to accomplish what needs to happen, it is a way. And I acknowledge that.
I would like to point out one other thing, and that is inflation. Uh, if you look at a twenty million dollar project and you delay it by one year, the next year is twenty-one million dollars. If you delay it ten years, you're looking at, adding close to seventeen million dollars. I believe it's seventeen. I can, I, I think, uh, I had it in the chart. I haven't looked at it lately. But you're adding close to a million dollars a year to the cost on a six percent inflation rate. So, uh, it's, it's in my mind, critical that we move as fast as we can, save, uh, on the inflation. And then six percent is pretty, uh, from twenty to twenty-three, twenty-two, it was much higher than six percent. And, uh, uh, and that, that's why we're in the situation we are now with construction costs is because of those two years. But, uh, and that's why it's, in my mind, this is the time to do it, is, is now so that we don't have to, it won't cost us a whole lot more in the future to do it. So.
I'd make a motion to, uh, authorize the county judge to sign the closing documents on the purchase of the building. Second.
Motion to debate. Second, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, one other thing.
Going, going. All those in favor say aye. Uh, opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Alright, motion passed. Alright, item, uh, number five, discuss, consider court security officer certification course.
Uh, the, uh, I know this, it says Mitch on here.
That's not me.
But, uh, but we have, um, we have court security personnel, uh, that are, um, that, that take care of, of all of us in here. And quite honestly, uh, the, the, um, various departments do take in cash, checks, credit cards. Uh, we have, we have a lot of, uh, of VIPs in here. Um, you know, such as the district judge and the county court law judge, very important persons. And, and so, um, I do believe that it's important for our security personnel that are, are, uh, that are taking care of us, their sheriff's deputies. I believe that they should, uh, that they should have the ability, uh, to have certification courses uh, and, and receive additional training. And so I, I just wanted to, uh, uh, bring to the court, uh, the security officer, one security officer, uh, is interested in going to a training later this year. And, and so I, I, I make a motion, uh, that the court, uh, approve the, uh, the certification. This is specific to security officers, uh, in their training. I would, I would ask that that be, I'd make a motion to, to approve that, uh, that certification and training.
Sheriff, what's your opinion?
Uh, well, I agree, yeah. The more famous, thanks for talking up here, uh, obviously.
I'll, I'll second that. Where, where are we sending them to do that? Where's that at?
Uh, this, there, there are trainings all over the place, but I think this one's in Nevada. It, in, in, uh, it's my understanding that the sheriff has a training budget associated with his.
So if it's already in the budget, is there a need for us to approve it?
But I mean, it's fine, it's fine with me to just, to just, uh, as, as, uh, as notice to the public that, that our security personnel are being trained. Um, we don't need any embarrassing situations where First Amendment auditors come in and, and we, uh, treat them poorly and don't respect their rights.
Commissioner, I will say, I made it. One of the positions is underneath the, uh, different budget. It's the actual, uh, courthouse sergeant. Uh, so that line is a little bit, the training budget is lowered. So, uh, I have not seen a possibility class, so, uh, if they exceed that, giving trial or anything, well, that's maybe one reason.
Is it, uh, the sergeant that's participating in this training? Or is it the, one of the deputies?
Walt, didn't it?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, Walt.
Yeah. Very good.
Alright, is there a motion? Or the motion is made, is saying it?
I'll be seconded.
Yeah, yeah. All those in favor say aye. Uh, opposed, like sign, motion passed. I would like to make a comment because I don't know if any of the commissioners here are aware of this, but if airfare is involved, the county has a policy that all air, air, all tickets for airlines have to be approved by the commissioner's court before they're purchased. So, yes, sir.
Well, then, the, the, I said, the mafia here first time.
Yeah, then the, the, yeah, based, based on that, I wouldn't wear that, that flight policy. Yes, sir.
I would love to. I think you're.
Well, that's, that's why we got, that's what I'm trying to.
Well, I, I, I would amend my motion to say that discuss and consider, uh, the court security officer and all associated, uh, expenses related to certification course, uh, be, you know, be covered by, by the county related to none of his, uh, you know, fun activities, where I would. Well, I would, I would cover those. No fun activities, just only certifications.
Cause, okay, well. We've already passed it.
Well, uh, then, then uh-
We just need to, uh, it just needs to bring the airline purchase to the commissioner's court when it's made. When the reservation is made. I did not see airline reservations.
On the same, I don't think we're not amended something that's just asking if you have been off of that.
Not, not that I'm aware of. Out on the Susan?
Well, it, you know, I, this, this line item, Susan, is written as discussing, consider that certification course. Uh, is that not broad enough to, to uh, uh, for the associated uh, requirements for travel?
I'm not really sure about the travel part of it. I can tell you that-
Tony's here.
Yeah.
He's hiding in the corner over there.
She got her hands.
Well, we voted on it. We already approved it.
Tony, what's the law on that?
We have an expert here.
I don't know who the fastest is.
I was just about to note that-
December. It's in December.
It was already been issued and he paid for the travel himself because they had not brought it to court. And the documents that I've seen, he's, do not include his property. So he would need to resubmit and have the travel for him to be gets reimbursed on that. It is a training, we did not have the chemical for, y'all get it for transparency, but the documents that are in there now do not support reimbursement number travel, which will need to be done.
Yeah, we, in, in, and uh, that can be done before or after, whatever the case might be. If he's already paid for it, then we'll, we'll bring it as.
I wasn't unaware. I wasn't aware of the argument. That's how valuable it is to the plastic paper.
Okay, what was, alright. We will move on and item number six, discuss and consider the purchase of tasers with funds returned from the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget.
Commissioner, Judge, this is the uh, this is the quote on taser, short ones, so we don't share.
I don't want to share.
If y'all want to share.
Share.
So on a very, first of all, thank y'all for, for seeing me about this. And I think I've made it very clear during the budget process that uh, I wanted to get paid for all the deputies. And uh, so what you see in front of you, just look at the very first page, that's gonna be the most important page for us. The total cost uh, is gonna be uh, I don't have my readers, but one eighty-one, ninety-six, twenty. Plus a hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred eighty-six dollars and twenty cents for thirty-five tasers. Uh, one training simulator, um, thirty-five license, obviously start at the office, but uh, that's thirty-five license for each officer. It also gives you thirty-five license for evidence, uh, package and all that good stuff. So when, when I came to y'all during the budget thing, uh, I told y'all that, you know, I would like to do this and I have, and I'm sure that y'all know these numbers too. I'm quite sure y'all do. I had the last, uh, my last statement, budget same from nine thirty. And by my calculations on, on the remaining money, sheriff's office gave back nine hundred four thousand, four hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-eight. That's what the, my office gave back. Now, that is to include uh, the, the insurance portions and just, just everything altogether. I, so that's what was given back. So um, you know, a mere, and then, and then on top of that, I believe, I don't believe that numbers. But I believe that we had to offset the budget a little bit by three hundred something thousand dollars. So if I, if, if our office gave back nine hundred four thousand and if we are, plus we offset to three hundred thousand, that still leaves for that six hundred thousand dollars left roughly that we give, that we gave back uh, to our part. So you take the one eighty-one, we'll round up, say two hundred thousand. We're still a thousand in the positive there. I mean, a hundred thousand in positive. So that's what I would request. It's just another tool, uh, tool for the, the deputies out there. In the past, when I worked the streets here, we had tasers. They, the, the eight point six, those were phased out. No parks for them. We don't have any. There's no parks for them. There's no uh, nothing like that. So well, nobody has any tasers whatsoever now, except DPS has tasers. I believe uh, Will Spoin, Hampton, everybody's, were nice. That's what I would ask and there is an option. Uh, it's a five-year option for you to do payments. But um, I don't believe in that. I believe that um, we have the money. So I believe that we should do it because I don't want to, uh, this is my first year, right? So I got three years left. That would be two additional years that if I'm not reelected, then put my burden on somebody else. And I don't want that to happen. I'll make sure that I take care of my business during my time. So.
So can I ask, can I ask, is, is his numbers correct? Like what he's turned back?
He didn't already have the yellow matter. That might even, that his return does back to the journal. And he, it was not already in number. He does not want to spend those funds. It goes back to each other.
And, and basically, and I did include the piers, the outstanding, you know, I'm sorry, I did not include those totals in my outstanding bills. That was, that was left off. So I, I did about those.
So you, so even, so what, for what you gave back and what you're fixing to spend, you're still contributing back into the fund four hundred thousand dollars?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
I appreciate that.
To include the, the shortfall, to include, yeah, everything. I mean, I have the numbers on me. That almost, that almost covers the bottom obstacles, increase it by two hundred ten thousand dollars.
Detroit, I'm good with it.
Okay, you're talking, uh, have you explored options for grants for these taser?
No. Oh, and, and one other thing too, in January, um, these prices go up by ten percent. Eighteen thousand dollars.
So you're looking at thirty-six thousand dollars a year, correct?
He was, he just wants to play it out, like to play it.
Well, you, Judge, you made a comment that, you know, um, we inherited somebody else's problem with the, the courthouse and we want to fix the problem now. I don't want somebody to inherit my debt. Another, another sheriff, if I don't hear that good. So I'd like to not do the payment program and just knock it out.
Well, that's, that's what it would average out, basically, thirty-six thousand. And you say you have no tasers now. When, when uh, when was the last time we had tasers?
Ooh, yeah, two thousand twenty-one.
And that, and at that point, they were fifteen years old? Possibly.
Possibly.
Cause you said in oh-six, y'all had them when you was here, right? Or not?
I came here in twenty thirteen, so I can't think of oh-six. It happened twenty thirteen.
Is there a difference in the price, Kevin? This one eighty-one, eighty-six, twenty, if you, I can do the math, but I haven't. Um, we pay the thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. Will they charge us interest on the five-year pay, from the five-year payment?
That'd be thirty, thirty-six, thirty, thirty-nine, still over something.
We don't get charged tax, do we?
No, that's one of those two numbers. If you look uh, for the, the number I highlighted, the one eighty-one.
Oh.
And there's a number in each act of one nine two, that's with tax. We don't go charge that.
So we'd be paying thirty-six. A year, yeah, a year.
So, and this includes all the, uh, uh, similar cartridges? Is this, this is a, a package deal that uh,
Yes, sir.
replacement cartridges. Uh, it's all-inclusive, I guess.
All, all-inclusive, yes, sir. Uh, five hundred and thirty live cartridges. It's the breakdown. Not at one forty, all the, all the, I mean, there's pages of just, of numbers. Um, might be goes over some of them for you. Uh, five hundred and thirty uh, live cartridges, twenty in there, uh, those are same. Um, a hundred and eighty halt. Uh, it's, there's just all kinds of different numbers in there. They, they all do come with a warranty, uh, leaving some file, that's a five-year warranty, I believe.
Can I ask you a hard, can I ask you a hard question?
Hard question?
No, I'll, I'll do the easy question. Okay, here's the easy question.
Let's do it.
What made you decide to go with this brand of taser? Is it just, are you familiar with it? Like, is there other, I mean, you know, you-
I mean, there's civilian models, but this is mainly all enforcement taser model.
Okay. Alright, I'm good with it. Y'all ready?
We had a, we had a bunch of criminals that said they were opposed to y'all getting these, but they didn't want to be here to speak on it today. I don't know that, that, they just said they'd register their complaints by email.
Yeah, they did.
I would, so, and, and just clarify, uh, yes, you gave the money back. It's in our general fund. But because we're in the current year budget, basically what we're now doing is going against contingency. As we're, we're just going against the, and we have plenty of money budget in the contingency to do that, so.
Let me, can I ask this question?
Sure.
I mean, since it's zero percent interest, now I get what you're talking about. If we pay thirty-six thousand dollars a year and just budgeted it instead of the hundred eighty-one and give us more operating capital in the contingency and where it's zero percent interest and say, for some reason, he doesn't come back in five years, you know, his last day, we just pay it off. That way he wouldn't have any debt. But I mean, you're you know, it's one way, half, doesn't the other, but you've got more operating capital doing thirty-six thousand a year instead of spending the whole
Sure.
whole shebang.
And, and that's fine. I, my main thing is, you know, I just, I want to take care of my business, finally.
Right.
I like, I agree.
And that makes sense. Actually, I didn't think about it, but I was just seeing five-year plan and that's fine. That's something that's important, so I'm grateful that too.
Kevin, I understand where you're coming from because I just bought a piece of machinery that's gonna go a year into the next guy, but I really didn't have a choice.
Sure. I mean, they probably don't have choices, right?
But, but I liked what Brandon's saying here is, let's, I, I had rather see us do it on that yearly payment.
We can make interest.
And then, or not. I could have a payment off of interest. You know what I'm saying? But, but I, I'm far the, at the end of the year term, if you don't get reelected, we can, that kind of- Right, right. Hey, Sheriff, um, have, do you have the contract? Has, has Tony looked at the contract uh, related to this by any chance?
So I don't know, I don't know that it's a contract because now the payment plan may be a contract. But it's just a purchase of equipment, so it's not really.
There is a contract for the purchase of equipment. I'm sorry, Bobby foot stepped on you.
I'm laying it.
So I don't, I don't know, I mean, yes, we, I don't have a contract because I, I have, because to me it was
Cut and dry.
I remember, I heard the contract about taken, to be honest with you.
I, I would think that-
But I'm sure that, yeah, that should bring to my attention. There, there may be one because of the evidentiary law, they're being done doing the upbeat, so uh, so yeah.
Yeah, I, I've been, well, plus if we, if we go ahead with the, the payment plan, then there would be a contract on that too.
Yes, that's true.
I would think that we would want to make our, our uh, our motion and our second and our approval contingent on, on uh, Tony's review of the contract and, and that it satisfies uh, our concerns related to indemnification and, and a lot of the things that, that we would, that we'd want to see in there.
Um, yeah, absolutely. I understand, you understand. Uh, the only thing I, I do want to make sure that, that we understand, and I'll get on it soon, the leaker, uh, I'll get, I'll get to him, uh, try to put as possible this week. But as long as it don't go past uh, you know, January, it will be a tent to stay.
Well, that, that shouldn't take him very long. If you, yeah, if you get that.
I'm like sure we cover. So, and then if you want to-
I don't really do the payment plan because we gain interest and we got more in the, in the operating fund. And it's zero percent, it's zero, to us, it's zero percent interest. And if some unforeseen circumstances in five years, we owe forty thousand dollars to pay it off that way. And if not, it'll be five years. Send a motion.
And I don't, I, I would also, I know this, the uh, uh, constables are in the, they actually put money in uh, their budget for tasers. I don't know if they would, if we can tag those, add those to this, well.
I, I don't know what's possible.
Okay.
I, I don't know. I mean, if you're asking, the, the, so the situation-
Would, would it not be beneficial if we could getting a good deal here that, to buy an additional four for the constables?
So yeah, I have no problem doing that, but the problem with the, the situation that I see, you know, problem situation is that it, it's an evidentiary weapon, lease and rental weapon. So if, who's gonna hold their-
So we can do a separate contract, but get included with the same. It would have to be a, a separate contract, correct?
I think I see where Kevin's coming from. I, and I feel like that, that either they do that on their own.
Okay.
I, I have no, well, hang on.
I feel, I, I just feel like that.
Well, so I don't mind adding four more tasers. I have no problem with that. But the I have no problem with that. But the only, the situation I see is them maintaining their evidentiary portion of it somewhere.
We'd have to do a separate contract for them, is what we would need to do for that. Okay.
Well, I'd make a motion to approve this uh, on, on the payment uh, plan and make a contingent on, on our uh, district attorney's review of the uh, of the contract. And, and so long as it meets our, our requirements related to the contract that we, that we provide approval for the uh, for the five-year payment.
And it comes out of contingency.
And it comes out of contingency, yes.
Alright. Uh, motion has been made and seconded, uh, motion by Fisher Williams and seconded by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign, motion passes. Thank you very much. You bet. Uh, item number seven, discuss and consider resolution to cast votes for the Van Zandt County Appraisal District Board of Directors for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven term.
Yeah, we've got folks here, uh, your honor, that uh, would like to, like to talk about their qualifications related to this. If we could ask them to come uh, to the podium.
Okay, Kristin. We have, we have, and let me just give background to uh, to everybody. The uh, uh, board of directors for the uh, Van Zandt County Appraisal District are picked by the taxing entities. And that's based on the number of uh, votes that's allocated based on the amount of taxes that are collected. So Van Zandt County, there's a total of five thousand votes. Van Zandt County has twenty-eight percent of those or fourteen hundred and twelve votes. And we are allowed to uh, cast those votes among the four candidates that are nominees that have been selected, which are Christie Beckham, Clay Nicholas, Kyle Thompson, and uh, C W Wilson Jr. Those are the four that are currently on the ballot. So with that, we have, how many we have here?
Two.
Two, okay. Would y'all like to make a stump speech?
What?
This is Clay Nicholas.
Yes, uh, Judge Commissioners, uh, my name is Clay Nicholas. Uh, I currently serve as one of your elected uh, directors since, I believe, since two thousand and seventeen. Uh, I previously served as a city councilman for the city of Canton, uh, former school board member for Canton ISD. Uh, and a local uh, business owner. Uh, see many of you all the time in the courthouse because I do a lot of my work here. I am uh, primarily in the Bell Bond business. I own a family business and operate in five counties, uh, Smith, Henderson, uh, Van Zandt County, uh, Wood and Rans. Uh, in addition to that, as long as I've been in the Bell Bond business, I've been a licensed Realtor. And I've been a Realtor for uh, twenty, twenty-two years this month. Um, I am, uh, have been and, and am very active on a side basis in, in real estate. Uh, most of my real estate work now involves uh, certain support on the receiver for both the district court and the county court law for partition suits. I have served, uh, I have a servant's heart. I uh, am willing to continue serving. And with that, would uh, ask for your votes. That's about it.
And questions?
What, what is the, what does a board member for this board do?
We are primarily responsible uh, for the uh, activities and actions of the appraisal district, uh, buying through the uh, taxing entities. We are, uh, in charge of, uh, the appraisal district budget. Uh, the, uh, overall administration and, and operations, uh, buying through, uh, our, uh, hired, uh, chief appraiser. Where they serve like a city manager would or a city manager would for that entity. We need to, usually once a month, uh. If you have good people in place, you know, you, you, you can to a degree turn it on, on, on autopilot and let them do their job. We have very good, uh, chief appraiser. Uh, we had previously very good chief appraiser, uh, that do their jobs efficiently. Uh, so, you know, we need, usually once a month, every, sometimes every couple of months, uh, throughout the, you know, the, the activities. Of the year and the appraisal district has, uh, busy seasons of collections and appraisals and then things like that and some slower times. Um, because, uh, we're there, you know, primarily to, uh, supervise. The overall, uh, operations and, and activities of the appraisal.
And how long have you been on the board?
Since two thousand seventeen, I believe.
How many are on the board?
Uh, five, uh, I believe there's, we have one seat, but there was no nominations. So. Right now y'all have four on the ballot. And then after that, uh, I believe if I'm correct, uh. About, uh, the nominations, uh, will be overdone again to the, to the entities. And all, uh, put forth some names and then, uh, we will, the board will select. Let's see.
So, and you, you're not involved in the protests, so, or the, um. The, uh, when, when citizens protest or.
No, so that's the ARD.
Right, this is not part of your, that board. Right, okay.
Yes, sir.
You point the appraisal review board?
Yes, sir. Ultimately, it's usually trying to find somebody that's willing to do it.
Well, we should thank you for coming in. And putting your name in the hat for, for this steam session.
Glad to be here. Glad to answer any questions that any of y'all have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You bet.
Good morning, guys. So, um, I know you guys all received a copy of the bio clip asked for us to send that in the property is. I'll scare, I'll just read this and then I'll answer any questions that any of y'all have. So. Um, a licensed realtor, I've been a business owner for over fifteen years, um, all of my experience in, in real estate mostly. Um, since two thousand nine, I've worked extensively in property sales, valuation and market analysis throughout surrounding counties as well as Van Zandt County. My professional background has provided me with a comprehensive understanding. How appraisals and property tax policies affect both individual taxpayers and broader community. I maintain an active working relationship with the Van Zandt County Appraisal District, including the current chief appraiser, as well as with multiple taxing entities across the county. This collaboration has given me valuable insight into the operational processes, challenges and opportunities within the appraisal system. In addition to my professional experience, I'm a dedicated advocate for taxpayer education and government transparency. I regularly host educational classes. To help property owners understand the appraisal process, protest procedures and their rights under Texas property and tax law. Sorry, it's small. I also had the opportunity to serve as a panel speaker at a countywide meeting on property tax issues where I encouraged open constructive dialogue between citizens and local officials. Officials, my commitment to integrity, accountability and fairness combined with my professional experience. And cooperative relationship local taxing entities positions me to serve citizens of Van Zandt County effectively and responsibly as a member of the appraisal district board. Of directors. And one of the things that, you know, I'll. Address publicly is, I don't know that there's many people in this county that has gone before the appraisal review board more times than I have with. Citizens here. Um, and I think that that definitely needs, um, a little bit of love and care. And like he said, obviously, it's probably a little bit hard to get. To volunteer for that position. Um, but I think that there needs to be, um, some education across the board. I don't know how much experience you guys have had going in there with your. Property tax protest, but that is a very important position and this board directs those scenes.
Well, are you hoping to change anything in particular? Or you, do you have your eyes, your scope on something?
Say effectively, so I will say this, I have come across, um, several of those people in the ARB that truly know. Um, how to effectively look at the, the property values. They understand tax code, um, they ask intelligent questions, they. It, it, it's a, it's a. It's a fair shake. And then there's people that sit, sit that side of things and. They have no idea. So, and, you know, but it's, it's not, I'm coming from a place of disrespect. I hope you understand that. But, um, it's a very important seat because the people in this county depend on those people to be able to come in and explain. Whatever, you know, their side of things may be, and if they're not educated on that side, then it, it becomes a difficult.
Well, anytime you appear in a court setting, it, it's intimidating and a lot of folks, they don't want to do there. They don't want to be there. But there's a certain amount of financial pressure that's placed on them and they say, I gotta go. I have to go do it.
Procedure, what, what thing people don't understand is that that tax code, if you read it, it's written in your favor. The average citizen doesn't read tax code, so.
Well, it is good to have somebody advocate for those that really don't feel. Pleasant about having to be there. So that, that's really good.
I'm going to insert anyone's questions.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right. So, uh, fourteen hundred and twelve votes, four candidates. Uh, if we divided it equally among all four, it'd be three hundred and fifty-three votes each. What is your recommendation?
Does anybody have any particular reason why any one of them wouldn't qualify for any of the votes?
I don't believe, the other two are already serving, correct?
Yeah.
They're, they're already on the board.
We're going to have to elect another one in a month or two.
To nominate.
Or nominate.
And the board will, yeah, board will.
Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, it's, it's commendable. Anybody who'll put their name in the hat for anything i- in, in, uh. You know, in service and, um, so.
But, and, and my opinion is by dividing it four ways, we will ensure all four get elected.
That's right. Uh, I'm in agreement with that. Is that your motion, Bobby?
Yeah, fix that, my motion, if you do it this way. This way, the way the judge said.
All right, uh, the motion is to divide our fourteen hundred and twelve votes, uh, among the four candidates. Uh, that is Commissioner. Phillips' motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Pose like sign. Motion passes. Congratulations, guys. All right, item number eight, it's considered the county judge to sign a service agreement renewal for People's Communication, Inc. And, uh, this would be Mr. Scott Slighton.
Yes, we use starting with just equals, um, this allows us to increase bandwidth, sheriff's office and courthouse with. Same costs as we had before.
Make a motion to approve.
Didn't even ask what the, what a cost, he just said.
We're already paying it.
The, the only question I have is can the sheriffs go to five hundred mag?
Not at that cost. We'll have to look at that being.
I don't, uh, with, with the camera traffic.
Well, we did a, we did a survey. We, we ran it, surveyed it. Two hundred was their, um, peak. They would sometimes go a little bit over, but the, the most they were pushing was about two hundred. So for now, two hundred would work for them. We may have to look at a cost option on the next budget. I believe that two hundred will be sufficient for the next.
Okay, all right. And the court, court asks us five hundred, right?
My motion stands.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Pose like sign, motion passes. Uh, item number nine, discuss the status of female reimbursements and appropriate budget lines.
With, with everybody's permission, I put this on there. I'd like to, I, I, my questions have been answered, so I would pass. On, um, number nine.
No action.
No action.
No action on item number nine. All right. Item number ten. Get there, discuss, consider solicitation for bids, of bids. For the remainder of the road and bridge materials contract period on December seventeenth, twenty twenty five through April thirtieth, twenty twenty six. For unblended road oil, soil, cement and lime.
Yeah, that's, that's mine. I'm using, you know, we got a, we got. We received bids in April normally. Is that, is that.
April, May, uh, yeah.
It was my first rodeo at that and I assumed. That unblended road oil was in the, in those bid packages and, you know. Reading those bid packages is a little bit difficult too. I probably should have got some help, but. Anyways, unbl- unblended was not in there. And I use an unblended road oil. It's a, it's half the price of the blended road oil and. You know, we were limited on how much we could purchase, so. I asked them to put this on there. Also, we didn't receive any kind of bids for soil stabilization. So, um.
So we're going to put, put out an RFP for these three items. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to put out RFP for these lime, cement and, um, unblended road oil.
Second.
Motion about, second, any further discussion? All of the papers say aye. Pose like sign, motion passes. Item number eleven, discuss, consider memorandum of understanding with the city of Canton for use of four L three Harris. Uh, uh, portable radios. And, uh, we've been, we've been having meetings with the city of Canton. Uh, in regards to getting them on our system and there's going to be a series of delays, uh, for them to get, uh. Uh, and actually we have delays in the fact that we can't do programming on, on motorola rodeos and. Uh, we can't do programming our own radios at the moment because we're not on, uh, actually there, but we. Uh, the sheriff agreed with the city to loan them four of our portable radios for their patrol officers to have. When they're out on duty and one for their dispatch, uh, group so that they can, and they have, they have been a valuable. Asset to, to us in the past, uh, the city of, uh, Canton Police Department. In assisting our, our sheriff's department. So we wanted to extend this out and give them the ability to access our radio system. Uh, until we get it up and running and that's what the, the memorandum is for and it's, uh. And, uh, Mr. Tony was actually the one who devised it for us.
I make a motion to approve that. Tony drafted it.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Pose like sign, motion passes. Item number twelve, discuss, consider authorizing county judge to apply for the rural. Law enforcement salary assistance program grant agreement for fiscal year twenty six and sign the related documentation. This, uh, uh, this program, this would be our third year, third year, I believe. Uh, in, in which we have, it's, uh, amount of five hundred thousand dollars. And that amount gets divided up, uh, between, between our correctional officers or jailers and between our patrol deputies. And, uh, consultants in the sheriff's office. And that allows us to, oh, pay them a much more, uh, realistic salary. All right, motion has been made. And second, and any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Pose like sign, my vote passes. Uh, item number thirteen, discuss, consider operation green light for veterans twenty twenty five. Uh, this is, uh, this will be our third year to do this. It's a resolution. Uh, basically we're, we're recognizing and honoring our veterans by lighting up the courthouse in green. For, uh, from, uh, uh, November fourth through the, uh, Veterans Day, which is November eleventh.
Is it in green now, Judge?
It is. So we're basically ratifying this highness is what it amounts to.
He motioned, I said.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Phillips. Any further discussion? All of the papers say aye. Pose like sign, motion passes. Item number fourteen, consent agenda. Consent, I will speak over the sirens. Consent agenda items are considered routine by the commissioner's court and will be enacted in one motion. Uh, there'll be no separate discussion on these items unless the county judge or commissioner requests an item be removed from consent agenda considered separately. Uh, is there any discussion?
Yes, I. I have, um. I have some invoices that probably should have been on last year's budget that got put in my package for this year. And I would move that we, um. Consent to this, uh, paying these bills, but I won't, I won't just put on contingent that this is, there's thirty five thousand dollars worth of, um. Invoices here that be on, on last year's budget. And they got put in this year's budget.
Are they on, are they on this bill payment? Are they on the bill payment for the, today?
Yes. And I want them, but I want them put back on last year's budget. Come out of last year's budget. They're, they're.
Are they dated?
They're dated nine thirty.
Four nine thirty? So, how, how can you tell that they got put on last year's budget or this year's budget?
His concern, I think, is that, that we're approving them to be paid now and he wants to make sure that the money that pays that thirty five thousand. Is not a, a debit for, for.
Against the current budget.
Yes.
So how do we ensure that?
Um, the bills be talking about how an activity they did, they changed back to reflect it coming out of this car that we're. And he did not, he owed that was, um, what did you say that was?
I don't remember. I had a PO that would cover all of it, didn't I?
There was a PO, this was for the recycled fresh concrete. There was a PO that was close with a forty one thousand dollar balance that. And those could have been applied to. Um, so it would just need. Reference back to that PO, even though it's tied to that PO, when it would allow it to come out in this.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the caveat that, that thirty five thousand, uh, be applied as the, uh.
Twenty five, okay.
Second.
All right, motion been made and, and second, any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye. Pose like sign. And all, are now our favorite item, number fifteen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
All right, tie goes to the runner. And that would be, uh, Bobby Phillips. All those in favor say aye. Pose like sign, motion passes. We are adjourned at, uh, pen thirty five, thirty eight. Thank you, gentlemen.
You're all right. Were you able to make that change in a minute?